Hello my friends, this is our Joshua Collins here. At the Homeless Advocates for Christ on Facebook. Feel free to join that group if you'd like. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and show you guys this video of the City Hall meeting from today. And if you can just please pray for me, you know, I get a little discouraged sometimes. And it's in council, people don't really do anything to change anything. No matter how many years I go speaking at City Hall. But um, oh please, I just pray that God give me a plan of attack or something. I don't know what I need to do, but I wanna see change, you know, see people get help. And legal protection for the homeless and just need more wisdom on how to do that. So, pray for me in that area, I really appreciate it. Again, if you'd like to join my Facebook group, Homeless Advocates for Christ. And um, of course you can email me at servingjesus99212@yahoo.com. If you have prayer requests, questions, ideas, if you want to get involved, let me know. Um, so anyways, I'll go ahead and let you guys watch the video now. But just wanted to share that with you guys and thanks for subscribing and for being there and commenting. Really appreciate that and we'll hope to hear from you soon. Thanks so much and may God bless you as you seek first God's kingdom always. Bye bye. One thing I forgot to say, please do share this video. Uh, hopefully get more awareness of what's happening among the homeless, to our community. And uh, subscribe to my channel if you'd like, if you haven't already. And with that, to City Council. Thank you. My name is our Joshua Collins. I'm the founder of the Facebook group, Homeless Advocates for Christ, as many of you know. And first like to read 1 Corinthians, chapter 6, 9 through 10. To encourage everyone to give the life to Jesus, to turn from sin. Uh, "Do you not know that the righteous will not inherit the kingdom of God? Do not be deceived, neither the fornicators nor idolaters, including the Muslims, nor adulterers, nor homosexuals, nor sodomites, nor thieves, nor the covetous, nor drunkards, nor violars, nor extortioners, will inherit the kingdom of God." There's a heaven, there's a hell, Jesus died for us. I encourage everyone to give the life to Jesus before it's too late. You could die today. Now, I have a question regarding the homeless situation. Mayor, last week, uh, you know, you basically said, uh, we've done some good things for the homeless. Uh, and I explained to you before you spoke that many of the laws that you passed are harming the homeless currently. So right now, uh, the homeless can have their property taken from them in parks, as you know. The sleeping bags are illegal in parks, as you know. Um, tarps are illegal, it just rained recently, as you know. Uh, so, I guess I have a couple of questions. How do you justify outlawing sleeping bags, tarps, and other needed items for the homeless to use? As that kind? Does helping some while robbing, harassing, criminalizing, and jailing others seem kind to you? Many homeless have lost medications, blankets, all their property, and their freedom due to the laws that you've created. How many of our people do you think need to be robbed, jailed, and harassed until you are labeled a thief and a criminal yourself for making all this happen with your laws? And did you know that all of you are criminals now in many people's eyes because you ignore the rights of the poor? Are you the only ones who deserve the right to sleep? Because you have money? In closing, I'd like to say Hitler was kind to some people, but robbed and murdered many others. Very few think Hitler was a kind and good man. My advice to you, if you truly want to be kind, is to disarm your weapons, the laws you have aimed at every homeless person in this town. End your proxy war on the homeless and the poor, including the veterans, elderly, and the sick. Sleep is a basic need. Legalize sleeping bags, tarps, and safe areas for the homeless to sleep. Look at what Santa Ana's doing. Love does not know harm to their neighbor. Your laws have harmed many and continue to do so. Thanks for your time. Thank you. Looks like code enforcement, the homeless outreach team is here. Taking the shopping carts from an old lady with some, older lady with some property here. Looks like they took her shopping carts. Left her with bags, so it's gonna be hard for her to transport that property. Hey, can I ask you a question?
No, I gotta go, man, sorry.
Well, I'm just curious, I mean, it says homeless outreach team there. But that's not helping her at all. If you were really outreach, wouldn't you give her something to transport her property or something like that?
There is a bag.
But obviously she can't carry that stuff.
She has her grants. I'm sure you take grants.
Yeah, it's gonna be very difficult now for them. So just, just, I don't think they should take that off of there. Because all you do is take property, you don't outreach or help anybody.
Oh, actually, we do, we got you one of these.
What do you do to help? How?
Uh, we have, uh, the volunteer six nine and all.
How's she getting help right now? It says homeless outreach team, how's she getting outreach and help right now?
I'm, I'm a branch of the outreach, so.
But you're not out, what?
It's a, it's a branch, it's like you don't see.
Yeah.
I'm a branch.
But I don't see homeless outreach taking place, that's what it says right here.
I said I'm part of the outreach.
Yeah.
I'm, uh, one of the tools that they use.
So one of the tools it is taking their property or collecting shopping carts? So you collect shopping carts?
Uh, just, uh, yeah, here's the part, yeah.
That's your job?
I return property, yes.
But how's that outreach to the homeless, that's just taking?
You should have a different, you should have a different label on your thing.
Yeah. We'll be more accurate, I think than?
You shouldn't be lying to the public.
Yeah.
I'm, uh, like I said, I'm a branch of the team. You know, there's not just me on it, there's several people.
Yeah.
We know.
Just wanna make you aware of what you're doing though, you just made it harder for her to?
How do you feel about doing this? How do you, how does it make you feel to, to, to do this? To, this woman is having a hardship right now because of the carts you've taken away?
Uh, the carts weren't brought to you. They were stolen. How would you feel if someone took your property and they give it back?
I, I, I find it really hard to believe that you stole those carts.
Would you be happy that I brought them back to you?
Well?
If someone took your stuff and I brought it back to you, would you be happy?
I understand that, but I'm saying if you're a homeless outreach?
How do you feel about this lady, she was being a citizen?
Yeah. But yesterday you did, right?
I, I just do what the PD tells me to do.
Yeah, see?
If you guys want, if you guys have any questions, just contact me, I'm sure you know Lozo.
Yeah.
So you can contact Lozo as well, I'm sure you know.
And me of the homeless, we know them. Thanks for your time. Well, there you have it, folks. The homeless outreach Anaheim. See what it says on the truck. Homeless outreach team. Now, that just does not look like outreach to me. It looks like they're just making things harder for people. She has to bag up all this property here. And uh, she's not high on drugs or anything, she's just trying to survive out here. So please pray for the homeless, if you'd like to join my Facebook group, Homeless Advocates for Christ. You can also email me at servingjesus99212@yahoo.com. And um, just pray God gives us wisdom on how to help these people and that, just pray these people really outreach to help the homeless in this city. Anaheim, known as the city of kindness, they call it. Thanks so much for prayers and support, may God bless them. Looks like code enforcement's taking more blankets. These blankets, are they taken over there, you know, K P? Homeless outreach at work here in Anaheim. Take the blankets and sleeping bags from the homeless. I know they really don't like me filming, but just pray they'll understand that homeless people have rights to and taking their property isn't gonna make things easier or get people off the streets. Just threw the blankets into the back of the homeless outreach team truck. That's what they do, that's how they outreach. Please keep the homeless in prayer and um, if you'd like to, uh, join my Facebook group, Homeless Advocates for Christ and you can also email me at servingjesus99212@yahoo.com. If you wanna get involved or speak at City Hall with us. Uh, if you have ideas, the more support, the better. Thanks so much for your prayers and support. And um, we do hope to hear from you soon. God bless you as you seek God's kingdom first always. Looks like they're giving a homeless woman a camping ticket. Here. Maxwell Park. They're citing her for property storage as an infraction. Now, the park is open right now. And they know that she's going to Hawaii, they're supposed to be helping her get to Hawaii. So why are they making it harder for her by giving her an infraction before she leaves? Makes no sense. City of kindness at work here in Anaheim, California. So now, she's homeless and has to deal with this infraction issue. And if it goes to warrant, then she'll go to jail. Lose her property and who knows what else. So, just please keep the homeless in prayer in this city, Anaheim. As you can see, uh, there's not very good Samaritans here. They want a ticket homelessness away and that's not really gonna work. So, thanks for your prayers and support, if you'd like, uh, to join my Facebook group, Homeless Advocates for Christ. You can also email me at servingjesus99212@yahoo.com. She has her ticket now and obviously that isn't helping homeless people. Thanks for your prayers and support and uh, may God bless you as you seek first God's kingdom always. Homeless outreach team with property, blankets, et cetera, from the homeless. There they go. Hello my friends, this is our Joshua Collins with Homeless Advocates for Christ. And my friend here is gonna go ahead and share a little bit how she's been treated. Now, let me ask you this before we start, I guess, the question would be, they call Anaheim the city of kindness. Now, what would you say to people that say, hey, the Anaheim is the city of kindness? Do you agree with that or disagree? And why, uh, whatever you're, you know, whether you agree or not, go ahead.
I disagree because it's not a city of kindness anymore. You can't go to a park or anything without the cops harassing you.
Yeah.
Um, when I go, I mean, I don't, there's hardly any place to park to even sleep in your car. What do they do, want women to sleep on the ground?
Yeah.
You know, uh, so I'll go to Walmart sometimes and I'll put like a little sunscreen up, you know, and I'll put little, you know, uh, towels on the windows.
Mm-hmm.
And I stay in the back section and I won't bother anybody, don't leave any messes or anything. They still come through there and swoop us out of there, tell us we can't be there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it, it's too dangerous to be sleeping on the street.
Yeah.
It is, there's, you know, too many people that go around and
Especially for women.
Yeah, especially for women.
Yeah.
But you know, there's times where I've even parked over by apartments or something like that. And I'd be parked along the side of the, in a parking space.
Yeah.
And uh, people will call because we're, we're taking up a parking place.
Yeah.
And we're not doing anything, we're just sitting there. I'm like looking at my phone or watching a little movie or something. Then we have to leave because they call the police on us and they start harassing us.
Because someone falls, if someone falls asleep in a car, it's like, just like, I told you, I purchased the one car. I had the other car, they towed that car, so I purchased another car, and I purchased another car. Then, and I told him I was homeless, this is all I had.
Yeah.
And the police took it from me.
Yeah, that's in Stanton, right?
And left me on the street, yeah, that was in Garden Grove. That was in Garden Grove was the, the one that took the, Stanton police took the other car because it was parked in the same spot for three days.
Uh-huh.
You know, and I didn't get back in, I didn't even know they put a warning or anything, they didn't.
Yeah.
If they did put a warning, who knows? They just towed the car, but I'd already had it towed, you know, before. Because the car kept breaking down, I just purchased it for thirteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Saved up money, and when you save up money, it's hard when you're homeless.
Yeah.
And you're saving up money to get somewhere.
Yeah.
And then they just rip it out from you before you can even get down to the DMV, you know? I just fixed the new car, I got, I just fixed the axle.
Yeah.
And ready to go to the DMV and ran out of gas. And they stopped and I took the car, even though they wouldn't look at the bill of sale or nothing, just took my car.
Yeah.
You know, oh, you're homeless, great, we'll take it. And then now I can't get any of my property out, I couldn't get any of my property out because I didn't have the paperwork.
When, when did they take the car? When did they take?
This was, um, the beginning of February.
Yeah.
Yes, and I went, and I was in the hospital for three weeks after that. Because I was so hurt, you know what I mean? I was infected bad, my leveling, and I was hurt so bad. You know, I explained to them, please, this is, you know, I need a car, you know, and it's, um, yeah, unfortunately, um, you know, I used to work two jobs, but unfortunately, I'm probably gonna have to get disability because of my health issues.
Wow.
You know, it made it hurt. You know, and I understand I made bad decisions in my life, however though, but now that you make good decisions, this is the kick I get for making good decisions?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that the kick, kick I get?
Yeah.
You know, or, uh, they want us to not break the laws and not do anything, but then yet they don't give us any freedom to come up to, to
So they keep, keep you down, right?
Yeah, kick you when you're down, you know, that's the saying, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They don't kick you when you're up because they can't. And they kick you when you're down.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's the only people that, you know, I mean, talking about robbed, I feel robbed by our, by our system.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
I mean, I work all these years and I just feel, I feel robbed of our, you know, our freedom is being taken away and, um, it's just our integrity, you know, our beliefs.
Yeah, you know what I like, I hate is when you're at the park or something like that. And you're just, you're just minding your own business, why do they gotta come and harass you when you're at the park?
Yeah.
You know, this is supposed to be a place where everybody can come and sit down, lay down on a blanket if you want to. And take a nap if you want to, it's no big deal.
If we could be in a crime, yeah, but you're not allowed to sleep in Orange County, you know?
That's what it is, but you know?
Not in a vehicle, you know, they tell me that you're not allowed to sleep, and I'm not allowed to sleep, how is people to get harassed?
Was that Anaheim PD or sheriff that said that?
Oh, Anaheim PD.
Yeah, yeah, wow.
Yeah, I just get tired of that, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the one officer was nice, but it's just, you know, some are not nice.
Yeah.
The ones that are nice, you know, they tell us, you know, look, we have to do this, and I understand to a certain point. But they don't have to go to the instant they do, some of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Mainly it was Garden Grove and Stanton.
A little compassion, you know, people, it's rough nowadays, it's tough out there, you know?
Especially for women.
It is, it's really tough.
It is, and um, I did not understand, like, when that man towed my, um, towed my vehicle, he didn't have to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
He knew the situation and he could've let me get my bill of sale out and showed him that I just purchased the car.
What city was that again?
That was Garden Grove.
Garden Grove.
Yeah, very, um,
You remember the towing company or anything?
Yeah, um, oh shit, night towing, now, um,
Nighttime towing or night something, night star towing? Or something like that, it was night something towing.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, but yeah.
Well, you can get us the information on that, maybe we could try to do something, expose it or do something about that.
Yeah, because they're making money off it, and you know, I didn't get any of my property back to you.
No, no, she lost everything.
Everything I owned, every single thing I owned.
That's terrible.
I did not receive anything, and I, you know, I've lost what I owned before by bad choices.
Yeah.
But now that I'm making, you know, when I make good choices and, you know, I was now, and I got in treatment, here I get into treatment and do everything, and I lose everything, you know?
Wow, okay, well, thanks, thanks for sharing that. Yeah, we'll see what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys. So there you have it, folks, it's still a lot of harassment, as you can hear. So please pray for the homeless, and if you'd like to join my Facebook group, Homeless Advocates for Christ. You can also email me at servingjesus99212@yahoo.com if you wanna get involved. And uh, please pray for these women out here especially, and others that are weak or disabled, you know? It's a, it's a pretty, uh, pretty tough situation for them. So thanks so much for your prayers and support, and I hope to hear from you. May God bless you as you seek first God's kingdom always, bye bye.
No, it wasn't us, I booked it. I'm the one that booked it, you came up to talk to me. I told you what we were gonna do, we were gonna book it.
No, I didn't talk to you, I didn't talk to you.
I was there.
You were there.
Well, I took it one time, I remember because it was an abandoned car.
I know you took it.
Yeah, I left all your stuff on the ground, I took the shopping cart, that's all I did.
We didn't keep nothing there.
Today, she got all her property taken from Maxwell Park.
I don't know, then that would be up to the, whoever, the police are the ones that would, you'd have to go talk to the police. The HLO that are handling that. But the only contact I've had with you is
Yeah, he did talk to me one time. And he took the shopping cart, and he took that and left my other stuff there.
Yeah. This morning?
Well, that was about a week ago.
Yeah, she's talking about today, someone took all her property.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Now, what's the policy? Because it seems like they're not giving a three hour warning anymore, they're just taking things.
You'd have to talk with the police and see exactly what their, what their policy is.
But the police weren't with the code enforcement today. They just, code enforcement, so what are the code enforcement being told what to do? What are they being told to do?
You'll have to talk to the HLO, Mike Lozo is the head, head of HLO. So talk to him and he'll explain everything to you.
But you're, you, you know too what, what you're being told what to do, right? What are they telling you to do?
I'm telling, I'm telling you, you need to contact Mike Lozo, he's the officer in charge. And he'll be happy to explain everything to you.
Rafael here, Rafael?
No, he's not in right now, as far as I know.
He's the one that took the stuff to do, so.
Oh, that, no, I think he's
Because she's got her, um,
Medicine, my doctors, everything.
Her prescription.
Yeah, he's out, it shows on there, I don't know.
She's got her prescription rights on there and she needs to take that, and if she drops that, you know, you got, uh, whoever's in charge here.
You have to contact the police department, either Bob Conklin or Mike Lozo, they'd be happy to help you.
Yeah.
They explain everything.
They're not gonna be happy to help us.
We've talked to them a lot, yeah, they don't like us too much.
And we're beginning to get, you know, pissed because I buy her this stuff today. That I spent, and if we don't get it
Was it abandoned?
No, it wasn't abandoned.
She left, she went to the library for a while, but not that long.
Okay, if she wasn't anywhere around, that's considered abandoned.
So you guys don't give three hour tags anymore?
What's the order?
You have to talk to Mike Lozo, that's what I'm telling you.
Well, we're gonna talk to the mayor, actually, we're gonna piece up her.
Nope, yeah, okay.
Alright, thanks. Well, here we are at City Hall. Now, why wouldn't he know, he knows the policy, he just won't tell me?
He does.
Where is the mayor?
Seventh floor.
Seventh floor?
Yeah. Hey, how's the homeless outreach going? Well, here we are, city Anaheim, they have the homeless outreach truck set on the side there, homeless outreach team. You can see there's a lot of property in the back of that truck there. We're waiting for Patty to get her property back, hopefully. They were about an hour late today, showing up to open the doors where people can get their property. But um, hopefully, uh, Patty's property will be there. Medications, blankets, and everything else. Please keep the homeless in prayer, and if you'd like to, join my Facebook group, Homeless Advocates for Christ. And pray that a real homeless outreach team will be created that will actually help the homeless, not just take their property from them. Thanks so much for your prayers, if you'd like, also you can email me at servingjesus99212@yahoo.com. May God bless you as you seek first God's kingdom always, bye bye. Hello my friends, this is our Joshua Collins with Homeless Advocates for Christ. And we're here at the, uh, pickup center where the, the, uh, people can pick up their property that are homeless. But go ahead and tell me what happened when you went to get your property?
Um, well, I lost quite a bit of stuff. I lost all my bedding, backpack, camping equipment, tools, um, a stereo chair, it was very expensive. This is what I got back, is a backpack and some pencils.
Wow, so what all did you lose again?
I lost a stereo chair.
Mm-hmm.
Um, sleeping bag, um, some blankets, a quilt.
Wow.
Um, some tools.
Yeah, wow.
Um, and, and multiple other things I can't even think of right now.
I think you even left clothes.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Clothes.
Yeah, now, how long were you gone from your property, about?
One hour.
One hour, yeah.
And I heard, I thought they were supposed to give you a warning.
Yeah, they used to give three hour tags.
Right, and these guys took it within one hour with no warning.
Wait, now where were you, where was the property?
Twyla Reed Park.
Okay, alright, thanks for letting us know, we're gonna go to City Hall and speak about this stuff, so appreciate it so much.
Thanks for introducing.
Nice to meet you Josh, thanks, yeah. You guys on Facebook at all?
Yeah.
If you want, join my Facebook group, it's called Homeless Advocates for Christ. And you can, you know, post anything that happens and then we, we try to expose it and bring change and stuff. So, and also we have connection with ACLU, so, you know, we're trying to get, get, get change happening soon, so. Yeah, okay, thanks, yeah. So it sounds like they're not doing three hour tags anymore? Mr. Conklin, I have a question, can I ask you a question? Are they no longer doing, uh, tags? Sounds like they're not doing the three hour tags anymore?
The what?
They're not doing three hour tags anymore?
Um, Okay, it isn't, we've, I haven't done that in a while.
Okay.
We haven't had a need to because, you know, all the stuff is posted and the parks are ready.
Okay, yeah, I just make it
The parks that are posted, if you leave your stuff there, there's no, there's no requirement.
Yeah, I know the law doesn't require it, I'm just making, confirming that you guys aren't doing that anymore. Because we're gonna go to City Hall to speak, so, and make sure.
It's still a tool, but, I mean, we haven't had to do it in a while.
Yeah, well, I encourage you guys to do it if you can, I mean, just for stuff like this. I mean, it's a waste of your time, really, that they have to come down here when she would've been out at the library in a half hour to get her stuff and but they, they take it all the way over here, it's like wasting all your resources and time, really.
It's not a waste to us, I mean, I look at it as, like this one couple, they left, they left all their luggage and he says he left a bunch of tools and stuff at the park at ten thirty, eleven o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
It's best if we pick it up and store it for them versus it gets stolen or, or rummage through or whatever else. Because it sounds like some of his stuff is probably taken by somebody else before we collected it. Because he says he's missing tools and a chair or something, but, I mean, I look at it as an opportunity for us to be able to, I mean, yes, it's an expense on the city and police resources to do this, but if it means helping them out, so their stuff doesn't get stolen.
Yeah, but the thing is, you guys are an hour late coming here and
Our code officers were here at two o'clock, they were out here till two ten, nobody was here, so they left.
Oh, really?
We, we, we can't, like you said, it's a drain on resources and, and, and things like that. We can't wait here for an hour for people to show up.
Now, do you think it's possible to get this open more than once a week because?
Again, limited resources.
Yeah.
Okay, you said it yourself, it takes time out of
Yeah.
Our law enforcement responsibilities to come down here to do this.
Yeah.
So we make sure that all their immediate necessities, medications and stuff like that are, are, are taken with them if they're booked. Or if they go to county jail or something, we try to make sure that those things go with them.
Yeah.
But all the bulk property, we don't just store homeless stuff here, we, any bulk property that anybody has that, that they get arrested for.
Yeah.
It ends up here.
Yeah.
Just because they don't have the room at the station.
Yeah, well, the, yeah, I just encourage you, please do the three hour tag if you can, because that way
Well, if they leave their stuff in, 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 in public, especially the parks that are already marked, don't leave your stuff.
I know you don't have to, but I just encourage you to just, uh, because it'll, I think it'll save you guys a lot of time and resources, really. Because she'd be out, out in a half hour to get her stuff, and you guys already take it. So now she has to call you and have you open all this up and do all that, it's like a waste, really.
All the more reason that they shouldn't just leave their stuff unattended.
Yeah.
Like I was explaining to them, some cities even go so far as to, um, issue citations for people that come, that come to the storage place to get their stuff.
Yeah, well, this is city kindness, I know, hopefully we won't go that direction, but, right, it's supposed to be a city kindness.
Correct, however, if it's, like you said, it's a drain on resources.
Yeah.
If it means getting the, getting the message across to them that, hey, they need to not leave their stuff unattended in a public place. If that means
If they have a bathroom, I mean, sometimes they have a bathroom or things like that?
One of them go use the restroom, one comes back. Or they can downsize and organize their property and, 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 and travel with their property.
Yeah, well
Or they can utilize a church or a friend's house or family member's house, or they can
Yeah.
Use their, whatever income they have on a monthly basis to rent a public storage unit, or get a group together to go rent a public storage unit, or we have the
Well, the thing
Public storage facility at the local park.
The thing is, the police are saying even though that you came, let your friend watch your property for you.[1731.24]
We haven't said that.
That's what some, I've been told, that's what the officers are telling people.
If the property's attended, we're not gonna touch it.
Yeah, well, they, they did that in Maxwell, that's what I was told.
I wasn't there.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay, alright, well, thanks for your time, I'll talk to you later. There you have it, folks, uh, they're not taking the property, unfortunately, so... Just pray that these cops will see things the right way, this is ridiculous, but... Pray for Lou, and we're gonna all speak at City Hall continually through the summer, I'm sure, so, your prayers and support be appreciated. Again, you can join my Facebook group, Homeless Advocates for Christ, or email me at servingjesus99212@yahoo.com, and thanks so much again, may God bless you as you seek, seek first God's kingdom always, bye bye.
The people of the land have practiced extortion and committed robbery, they have wronged the poor and the needy, they have oppressed the foreigners who live among them, and they deny them justice. Seems like, um, now, the people that are talked about here are those with batches. And now are able to discriminate and criminalize the homeless that are out there, uh, by this unconstitutional ordinance that infringes on their Fourth Amendment right, which actually infringes on the part, amendment right to, to be, uh, to be able to be safe with our personals out there in the parks. Which now we could be, um, discriminated against by the police. Being able to go with a blanket and, and just take back in the park, and all of a sudden we have police surrounding us, asking us for papers or, or if we're homeless. Now, that, I mean, you know, we've been coming here for a long time for, uh, safe zone. Uh, while the shelters are being built, which is one that's not even gonna accommodate all the homeless that we have in Orange County, which are over, uh, twelve thousand or so. Now, um, you know, we have more problems with the short time rentals than we do with the homeless situation, as, as I see here every time that I come here. And it seems like, uh, we, the people are not being heard. Uh, it's a shame that, uh, that we have this criminal license to, uh, giving them shelter, uh, safe zone like we asked, which, this won't cost too much, there's a lot of empty lots. And that's all they need is to be safe, especially the women, the disabled, the veterans that are out there in harm's way, there's everything there, the criminal element out there. Uh, they're practically used, a lot of it, a lot of them are, are critical homeless, after a while they, they start losing, they lose hope. And this oppression that comes, uh, by this ordinance is, is making it worse, so I hope that, um, we're having a heart to change this, uh, this ordinance, that actually the, the government, the federal government is now, uh, looking into. So we just hope that things will change for the better in this city's called the...
Is there, is there any city that has a safe zone that they can build or example?
Uh, yes, there are kind of, uh, it's...
Miami, city, Miami.
Miami, when there's Miami, there has been some places, I mean, I can say them up, up here, but I, you know, I would have to have a little bit of commentary to give to you.
Could you say that to me?
Sure, hello. Yeah, cause it's, it's, it's something that we can do that, um, hasn't, you know, been done here, and it's proven that if we will save the city, uh, a lot of money, uh, that you're spending on resources with the police, the code enforcement, and taking their stuff and giving them away. You know, it's, it's, it's just, uh, a fact that we do need something else, cause things are not working, if you stay at the same, thank you, big word.
Oh, thanks for calling, Captain David, Bobby Johnson, Candor, and Keith Olson, and Lise Leveson, please sign up at the podium.
Thank you, uh, my name is R. Joshua Collins, I'm the founder of the Facebook group, Homeless Advocates for Christ, and I wanna just encourage everyone to give life to Jesus if they haven't already. I wanna read, uh, scripture, First Corinthians, chapter six, nine through eleven, tells us, "Do you not know that the wicked will not inherit the kingdom of God? Do not be deceived, neither fornicators, those are, those people having sex outside of marriage, nor idolaters such as the Muslims and people worshiping other gods, nor adulterers, nor homosexuals, nor sodomites, nor thieves, nor covetous, nor drunkards, nor revilers, nor extortioners will inherit the kingdom of God. And such were some of you, but you were washed, but you were sanctified, but you were justified in the name of the Lord Jesus and by the Spirit of our God." So if you're saved and set free from these things, that's great, but if you, you haven't been, I encourage you to turn to Christ before it's too late, there's a heaven and a hell, Jesus died for you, turn to Him before it's too late. Um, you know, uh, I have a concern also regarding the homeless issue, of course, so, um, you pledge allegiance to the flag, but there's a Fourth Amendment violations, we keep telling, uh, you, Mayor Tate, about, as well as everyone else here continually, so why, you might as well put it maybe in Statue of Mickey Mouse there or something, I don't know, and pledge allegiance to that. I don't understand why, uh, you're even pledging allegiance to the flag, cause we have a constitution, rights are being violated, we tell you this week after week, you don't do anything about it. Uh, Patty just got her property taken, she was gone thirty minutes from her property, got it all taken from her, we were able to pick it up, another homeless person said that, uh, they went to get their property back from where the police stored it, and a lot of the property wasn't even there, there's property being destroyed. So I have a couple of four requests I put here to, you know, if you care, you'll do something, right, but here's number one, uh, we need a daily property pickup, they only let people pick up property once a week. I mean, like a two hour timeframe or something like that, that's like making a property mountain where they have to, the homeless have to climb this big mountain, they get to their property, you make it so difficult for people that need medication, Patty got her medication taken, you're putting people's lives in danger. So, you know, uh, daily property pickup, more opportunity to get their property would be good. Uh, also, the, I talked to Bob Conklin, he says they're not doing three hour tags anymore on property, so they can just go in and swoop and take whenever they want, if you've gone for fifteen minutes going to the bathroom, they can take your property, so, uh, we need three hour tags at least, you know, for the, and you can weave that into the law, would be nice. Put that on the agenda, we need this on the agenda, that's the third thing, to get this on the agenda to change or, uh, repeal or, or change this ordinance somehow to, to, to protect the rights of the homeless, and of course for safe zones. You know, read the story of the Good Samaritan, the rich man Lazarus, you see all, what, how God condemns, uh, those that ignore the poor, uh, I encourage you not to do that, you know? How can an unkind, uh, leader create a city of kindness, you know? That's my question, and if you don't do anything about this, it shows you you're not kind, you're, you're not gonna create a city of kindness. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Randall.
Oh, Patty.
Appreciate the last week's comments, I wanna make sure I'm clear on what I think you're asking me, but... In my experience at least, in talking to, uh, Phoenix service, they've offered, uh, a storage, um, right next to a ballpark, and it seems like it's available daily, and it seems like, uh, there, uh, there's an opportunity for folks to access their property in these containers and medication, and anything else that they would like to place in those containers, so I think that's a city extension service that seems, um, in light of what you'd be asking for.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's in one part of town, but we're on the west side where Maxwell Park is, and they don't have one of those there. So a lot of times they just set, they set their property down like a blanket and a bag or whatever, and the, the, the code enforcement swoops it up, you know, they may be gone maybe fifteen, twenty minutes, and they come out and, cause maybe they have to go to the bathroom or charge their phone or whatever, and the code enforcement takes all their stuff, and the, and the, the side of the truck that says homeless outreach team, these code enforcement trucks where they throw all the property, and it's, it's a joke. That's how you outreach to the homeless, you go and take all their property and take off? That's what's happening out there. I've never heard of a West Anaheim property storage, so, but, but the thing is, even if you're in a property league, in, in a, in a park legally, you should be able to be there with your property and not have it stolen from you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is City Council, there is a second site, Little Peter and Beach Boulevard, just out on Ball Road, uh, at a church, I don't have exactly, that's exactly, we should get that information out of us, uh, that we, we always miss and make sure all of our officers, code enforcement employees, have that information about what, you know, just, they're in our parks or elsewhere. Welcome.
Thank you, um, Mayor, everybody, my name is Patty Davis, and, uh, I'm the one of my property taken yesterday, and I need my medicine, and I'm tired of taking my stuff. They don't take nobody else's stuff at Maxwell, they take my stuff, you know, I go to the bathroom, I have to go, and I come back and they're gonna take my medicine, and I need my medicine. And, and like, I told them, you know, you guys, you need to stop taking, they told me they wouldn't let me take the, uh, everybody's stuff no more, but they took my medicine and that's what they did. I'm tired of it, I gotta take it, I've been in the hospital already, I'm out and I'm getting tired of it, I'm taking my medicine. And when he was the same mom, uh, about that, the church and all that, um, beach and all, I saw that and they still working on it. Okay, so, think about that, you guys, bye, thank you.
Let me ask, Mayor, uh, so you, you have medicine that you need to take that we, that the city has confiscated?
Yeah.
You know, so let me, um, ask that you, uh, who can, uh, do this? Who's gonna, Greg Garcia's in the lobby, you know? I've got, uh, if you go back to the lobby, or definitely City Council, you said Greg Garcia, that's great, he, he, he can be with you in lobby, cause it's, uh, obviously you need medicine, you can't get to it, you need to figure out what's gonna happen, so, Greg Garcia, you can back there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I'll get it.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Greg Garcia's not a good person. Yeah, I don't trust police.
I'm here to, first of all, I hope all of my... The city needs to support an ordinance banning all SDRs both current and...
My friends, uh... If you can, please, uh, join my Facebook group, Homeless Advocates for Christ, and you can email us at servingjesus99212@yahoo.com. Just pray that change comes for the homeless, positive changes, and that God helps us to speak well on their behalf. Thanks so much for your prayers and support. I do hope to hear from you soon. May God bless. He had a backpack on his back, just got up from the railroad track, you know, it's been a hard life on the road, just laid on, nowhere to go, he said, I don't have the American dream, no fancy cars, but Jesus holds me in hand. I know what lies ahead of me, cause heaven knows I love the road.